Call this meeting ordered. Tonight, we're going to be led by the pledge by Ms. Chris Marshall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Any questions on agenda or consent agenda? There's no question, Ms. Oden. Let's go to... Get over there real quick. Go to number nine. I don't believe... Ms. Cardy, you want to do status update tonight?
I was prepared to do that tomorrow night. I didn't bring my laptop.
Okay, that's fine. We'll do it tomorrow night then. Number nine, Ms. Oden.
Is ESEA/IDEA Consolidated Funding Application Plan. This is something we do annually to get our funding. Under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESEA, and Individual with Disabilities Act, IDEA, the local consolidated grant application and plan for fiscal year 2014-01 includes the following components. Title I, Part A, is improving academic achievement for the disadvantaged. Title II, Part A, teacher and principal training recruitment. Title III, Part A, English language acquisition, language enhancement, and academic achievement. And IDEA, which is your special ed, is Part B, individual disabilities. The motion will be to approve the fiscal year 2014.01 Local Consolidated Grant Application Plan under ESEA/IDEA, and authorize the director to file any necessary budget revisions, addenda, or transfer requests. And majority of this is Title I. So, Ms. Amy Wise is here tonight to talk to you about it, if you'd like to. It's a long plan. I mean, you've seen it. Do you mind stepping up, Ms. Amy, and see if they've got a question or something they'd like to ask in relation to that? They've changed over the years a little bit how we file this, and so now it's the plan.
Anybody have any questions?
But this is just the plan. This doesn't have...
Well, there are dollar amounts attached to the plan. Where you...
This is how we will spend, how we plan to spend our money for next school year.
With sequestration. Do we know how that's affecting us yet?
We do. Special ed lost about $400,000.
Over $400,000.
Title I lost $240,000. Title II, we all lost some. Title I and special ed being funded the most actually lost the most also. So, this takes that into consideration, these numbers.
It has to be tough reconfiguring the plan with a lot less money.
Yes, it is. It was a challenge. But it's particularly for special ed. It was really a challenge for them to make ends meet.
So, as far as the state with taking all that money away for development, for staff development, and the other parts of the plan, can I suspect that there's not going to be any relief from the mandates that are already...
They're not talking about... Last year, they withheld some money in October, October, November with Title I. And in January, they put it back. There's no talk about adding the sequestration money back right now in Washington that I've heard.
I haven't seen that.
Well, those plans have always been underfunded. They've never been fully funded.
Correct.
And now, they're even more underfunded.
That's correct. That's correct. It's getting tougher. It's getting tougher to do more accountability with less money, but we...
The Title II there is where we do the big teacher training.
Right.
It used to be, you know, our DI conference. You know, Common Core, Common Sense is the title of it this year. That one, we have 1,160, I believe, I believe, I had told you the other day, teachers signed up to attend that this year. So, it's the largest number we've ever had this morning to attend the training.
It takes a lot of the Title II funds, but we are training 1,100 of our teachers at the same time, hearing the same information with high-quality presenters.
I bet former chairman Wise appreciates you being able to stretch that dollar.
I suppose. We don't talk about this.
I was talking about it, you know.
Amy, what's the total dollars you're talking about on all of it?
On all of it? It's just, I believe, under $12 million, I think is... I'd have to look at all the numbers because I'm not sure about the... Doing it together with IDEA. We... Title I is at 4.4 million, just over 4.4 million.
Anybody else?
What is Title II? How much is that, the training?
I can tell.
Title II is teacher and training. Administrator is... Originally, when they had No Child Left Behind, they gave Title II money so that you could train teachers to help the students achieve at a higher rate, do recruitment with it, a number of things like that. So, that's what they... Around $600 or something like that?
It's $607,536. And then Title III is in that, and they have $220,612.
And that is basically your ESL?
Yes, that's the ELL.
That's something you get for ESL students and teachers and all of that, Title III.
All right, Ms. Wise, we appreciate it.
I think you know this is my favorite thing to do.
We appreciate it. Number 10, Ms. Oden.
Number 10 is request for PRN wage increase for 2013, 2014. PRN, pro redi nata, is a Latin term which means "as the circumstance arises." Nurses are who cover schools on an as-needed basis. PRNs do not receive benefits and work random schedules to cover for unexpected absences of a full-time nursing staff. Nurses who we employ as PRNs are required to have a BSN, Bachelor's Degree course nursing, with several years of experience. The current PRN nurse wage is $23 per hour. The Department of Health Services is requesting a wage increase to $30 per hour to attract and adequately compensate experienced nurses for this position. This is at least $10 per hour less than PRN nurses receive in any hospital setting. The 2012, 2013 Rutherford County Schools salary schedule shows licensed employees with Bachelor's Degree and no experience making $35,196, which figures to be just over $25 per hour. That's more than we are paying the nurses right now. In 2012, '13, we spent $5,704 gross on PRN nurses for 248 hours. With the wage increase, we would expect the cost to increase to approximately $7,440 or an additional $1,739, assuming the same number of hours worked. The motion is to approve the increase for PRNs from $23 an hour to $30 an hour to attract and adequately compensate experienced nurses for this position. Ms. Sarah Delbridge is here, which is over our nursing staff. If you'd like to know when she uses PRNs and all that, an educational thing, if you'd like to know that. Do you mind stepping up and kind of filling them in a little bit?
We have more and more students with procedures throughout school day, requiring a nurse being on the campus most of the day. We do use other nurses who don't have a full-time campus to cover call-outs, field trips, and things like that. But there are times when we need somebody else. And sometimes, we do use these PRN nurses for just a few hours during the middle of the day for diabetes, for tube feedings, things like that. Or we may send them on a field trip and just have them cover the procedures that are on a field trip. Insulin injections and students with Dystat for seizure disorders. Right now, it's very hard to attract nurses who have experience, who can jump in to a setting like this and perform at a high level at the salary that it is, which has been that $23 an hour for over 10 years. So, it's just time to boost them a little bit. We don't use them very often. As I said, this year, we've only used them for a total of 248 hours. I can't tell from year to year how much we would need to use them, just depending on students in the system, how many nurses go on maternity leave and are out for other illnesses and things like that. But we did move a PRN nurse into a part-time position, so we lost her. And I'm trying to attract another nurse to... Another couple of nurses to work, and they're very well-qualified, but they just won't work for $23 an hour.
It's amazing that you, with 180-day school year with 248 hours. That's commendable.
In your conversation with the nurses you're recruiting, do you expect that $30 is accurate?
I do. Looking at hospital salary, hospital nurses who work PRN make about $40 to $45 an hour, just depending on the setting and that kind of thing. The nurses who are going to work in this setting know that it's a less acute setting and are... We have had several conversations, you know, looking at... If you look at the salary scale right now, that would average out to be about a seven-year experience level on the salary scale. So, that's appropriate, I feel. Yeah, it could attract some folks.
What time would it... So, would a nurse enter the school same time as a regular faculty member and leave at the same time?
The full-time nurses do, yes. The PRN nurses, it depends on if it was a school that needed a nurse there the whole day because of the situation, the students at that school. If there was not that need, they would just come in, perhaps, to do a tube feeding at such and at 10 o'clock, and then stay for insulin injections at lunchtime, and then they could leave. It's... It just really depends on the circumstances that are needed. But then, full-time nurses work like a teacher's schedule.
And how many schools do we have that do not have full-time nurses?
We have 10 schools that don't have full-time nurses right now.
Let me ask you two questions here. One is, do you know the average pay for a regular nurse that they will, you know, substitute for? I mean, is it $40, $50 an hour?
In the school setting?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I mean, you know, you're wanting to pay these $30. Is that comparable with the ones who are there already?
The nurses who are there, ooh, the experience level varies. Right now, nurses top out 15-year salary. I'd have to look at my experience base, but they're anywhere from a couple of years of experience to 20 years' experience, so...
Right, but I mean, I'm just...
The $30 an hour would be about seven and a half years, seven, seven and a half years of experience. So, that's like right in the middle of our experience.
So, the PRNs would be comparable with what regular nurses?
Yes, yes.
Now, second, since you're having a hard time getting nurses, have you considered lowering the experience years?
The number of years of experience that a nurse has to have to have this position, we posted it has to be three years. And that's really because nurses, they need to see emergencies, procedures, think how things are done in a general med-surg, hospital setting, before they come into a community setting and are exposed to, you know, 2,000 kids in a high school who could have any number of medical conditions. So, we need them to have a wide variety of experiences to draw on, so...
So, one year, two years? Not enough.
We found a couple really, really sharp nurses who have only had a couple of years of experience that we'd be very tempted to hire. As a PRN nurse, I really hesitate to hire somebody who doesn't have many more years of experience, just because they need to be able to think on their feet and not be in a comfort zone that so many of the full-time nurses would be in. And that's the way it is with any of the PRN staff in hospitals or schools.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
It's quite fascinating to know where nurses have gone from the days that I was in elementary school where there was one little dark room down the hall.
Yes, sir.
Down in front of the clinic in so many schools.
There's a...
And it's a busy clinic.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You know, now that you mentioned the clinic, there are even county medical clinics in some of our schools?
There are... They don't take care of the students there. They're just the midpoint clinics at the various schools, yes.
Is there any appropriate level of overlap or interaction between the two? Or we just need to keep that separate?
It really should be separate, yes. Yeah, there's one that actually shares space, but for the most part, they don't merge at all.
The midpoint would stay really booked up. I mean, anybody in the system knows how difficult it is to get an appointment, especially during the flu season and stuff like that.
Well, in the insurance committee, that was one of the points that they were making that those facilities were being so utilized.
Yeah.
And so, it's good to have them there, which is...
Absolutely, yeah. Wonderful benefit.
Anybody else? We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 11, Ms. Oden.
Number 11 is proposed central office position. The director's contract states that any new central office positions must be board-approved, must have board approval. The proposed position is 120-day contract for an athletic director to oversee TWSSAA and system compliance issues, assist with safety protocols, and serve as a contract for charter school applications. The current Teacher Center Coordinator, Anne McCraw, will be going on a 120-day contract on July 1, and our Safe Schools Program Manager and Testing Assistant, Josh Kubli, will become the lead person for testing while still retaining oversight of our school's safety program. The job description provides more details and expectations for this position, and the motion will be to approve a 120-day central office position for an athletic director and safety assistant. You have a job description, which we did acquire some from some other districts. Metro Nashville had a very large one and very involved like that. I guess one of the things that's really beginning to concern us some with is McGraw going halftime. She's going to be doing Teacher Center. I'm not sure how long our testing coordinator with the testing multiple times a year, which is going to start in '14, '15, exactly what's going to happen there. So, I've had a county commissioner mention this to me and several others. Because we're so large now, it's just unusual that we do not have somebody that's kind of overseeing some of the athletic functions. And if you... The job description, you're talking about oversight and training, eligibility requirements. Are students getting their physicals? Are we in compliance there? It's just a basis of trying to check and see that we stay in compliance and didn't get in trouble for the safety of our students and also meet all TWSSAA rules. So, we think we can do that basically with probably a 120-day contract.
As big as we've gotten, I don't know how we've been without this position for several years.
Yes, and Ms. Oden and I had a conversation this morning about this. And I think it's worth pointing out that one of the reasons why we educated $1,025 per student less than the state average is because of the efficiency of our central office. Ms. Oden and I discussed the presence of, both in language arts and mathematics specialists in that sixth through 12th grade level. And this position would kind of mirror that sixth through 12th grade interaction. I kind of overlooked the responsibilities of the charter school liaison kind of position. And I think as long as we're in our current position dealing with applications for charter school, then I'm very comfortable with that. If we ever get to a point where we're actually tracking the existence, we may have to look at that again. But it does make sense to have somebody who knows those restrictions. I'm also interested, though, as science standards come online and perhaps social studies standards and others, we may find that there are other areas for curriculum-specific specialists as this is an extracurricular specific specialist. And then likewise, there are systems that are neighboring us, that are putting in arts specialists.
Fine arts?
And fine arts specialists may be appropriate as well. But because of safety and because of the requirements that are necessary through interaction with TWSSAA and because of success. I mean, I don't think it's inappropriate to note the number of successful athletic programs that exist in our county and the abilities that we have there. And it certainly seems appropriate to have this position in place.
Can I reading this right? I think I am. That currently you have two full-time positions that would now be one full-time and two split positions that you're basically...
Well, you could take the money and do that. But right now, you... Currently, this year, we had two full-time when Anne McCraw, she did basically... She was lead for testing and Teacher Center. And then Josh Kubli, who did mostly testing and safety. Well, we're going to lose half of Anne in that, which is a half position. So, she's going to semi-retire and go for the 120-day contract. So, that's basically what we're talking about.
Basically, going from two to one, two halves.
Right. But I'm concerned about the safety. We had a training this morning with our SROs and went over everything from our drills last year and all. And the state's actually mandated additional drills. I mean, they have to have an intruder drill first 30 days of school. Before the end of August, you have to have your first fire drill, one every month and all. So, that is turning into a lot of paperwork itself to maintain and see that all the safety drills are done. So, I'm not sure with testing, Mr. Kubli can do it by himself.
And to the charter school thing, Mr. Zayal and Ms. Barnes can speak to this. But Metro Nashville, they go through lots of charter school applications. But I do know they've got people that are dedicated basically to that...
Nobody did that in one day.
To that process.
Yeah, they went through non-completive applications in a single day, 13.
And I think it's fair, at least for us, to think we're not going to approach those numbers anytime soon. But the idea that we call for exemplary, that charter schools aren't going to be interested in locating here, I think we found out is not the case. Not in the great numbers that we're seeing. But those applications, we fully anticipate are going to continue to come.
Ms. Oden?
Yes, sir.
Three, four years ago, we had a committee that met with one of the professors out of MTSU about marketing the athletic apparel of our schools and that there were dollars being left on the table because we had not possibly... And I'm not... Mr. Tackin could probably help me with the proper terminology as far as maybe not copyrighting it, but what would be another term?
It's trademark issue.
Trademark.
There's a difference. There's a different word, and I can't recall what they would happen to be. But copyright, it is the right term. Like the University of Tennessee logo, the Middle Tennessee logo, every university certainly has those. Those are marketed and licensed. In order to be able to use that and sell it, you have to have a license of... Some of us may have illegally put that on some type of apparel. But you can put a generic University of Tennessee, University of, I mean, Middle Tennessee State University, that kind of thing. I don't know how much licensing is being done with our schools. I think that's something that they have to look at if there's a cost involved to license the Riverdale tomahawk or whatever they have the hats on. I'm not sure how cost-efficient that is or is not.
And that might possibly be another hat that this position could wear at some point in time. Maybe not in the beginning because it looks like they're going to be wearing several hats.
Well, it's like any... Excuse me, Wayne, but it's like anything. If Riverdale tries to do it themselves, Oakland tries to do it themselves, Michigan tries to do it themselves, you probably have a little clap. But if you can organize that group together and say, "We've got 45 schools," or it wouldn't be 45 as elementary. Well, they do have their own logos as well. If you do that and go in some of that direction. So, it does take some coordination at some level to make that happen. And I'm guessing the football coach at Oakland would just assume the coach's football team rather than try to take that responsibility on.
Sure. And that's pretty much the way the decision of the committee was that that would, you know, there's buying power with volume, but I'm not sure that it went very far after that. And I'm not sure that we understood a direction or the procedure to take. But maybe this might open the door for these dollars to come back actually into the schools.
Dr. Harold has done a nice job at Stewart's Creek because he, you know, had kind of clean slate to set something up, but has a marketing relationship for the Stewart's Creek logo and some logoed apparel that is going to return dollars to that individual school. And I'm sure that other schools have, you know, some type of similar arrangement, and nobody wants to give up what's been successful for them. And yet, at the same time, we may find in time, by taking the best of the really good situations and coordinating, may stand and find a better situation.
Zoning is another big issue, too, for athletes and stuff. James Evans deals with that from time to time. You can... Middle school, you can wind up... We had some that actually had to forfeit some games. No, they didn't know themselves. It was just a matter of time of trying to check addresses and things like that and see. Just an issue.
So, you and I also discussed the possibilities and pitfalls of recruitment and to have a neutral party in the central office to kind of weigh in on any kind of recruiting issues because there are very real academic reasons for a student to go from a successful middle school athletic career to Central MAC or to the ID program at Oakland,[1586.08] middle school athletic career to Central Mac or to the ID program at Oakland, the dual enrollment at Auburn High School. So there are reasons for that, and to put in the right applications and petition the right way and not jeopardize their, you know, rest of their years of availability.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Oden, let's go to number 12. Let's do A and B tonight and see, we'll do C tomorrow night.
Transportation, tab A, or tab four, A, bus contracts from 2013-14 through 2017-2018. The current bus transportation services contracts expire June 30th, 2013. The chairman, transportation department, and board attorney Jeff Reed have met with representatives of the Bus Drivers Association, prepared the proposed contract for 2013-14 through 2016-17 school years. The mileage and seat rates in the attached contract do not yet reflect a 1.5% increase to both the mileage and seat rates being proposed by the transportation department. Pending final budget approval by the county of the school system's proposed budget, the transportation department would propose the mileage and seat rates, and the proposed contract be revised to reflect the 1.5% increase in both rates. The specific proposed mileage and seat rates reflecting the increase are attached to the addendum for the second proposed motion below. The fuel formula remains the same in the proposed contract, but the proposed contract provides that it shall be reviewed on an annual basis by the board. The first motion is to recommend approval, motion to approve the bus transportation services contract 2013-14 through 2016-17 school years for all approved bus contractors. And the second motion on this one is to approve, subject to Rutherford County approving the school system's proposed budget for the 2013-14 school year, the mileage and seat rates in the proposed bus transportation services contract be updated to the rates in the attached addendum. You want to just discuss A first?
Yeah, Mr. Reed? Won't you?
I'll go through. The last several weeks, representatives of the school system and representatives of the bus contractor association met for review of existing bus contractors that we had in place up through the end of June. There were comments and changes suggested by the bus school system and by the contractors association, so those comments have been incorporated into the revised draft that we have agreed tonight. Last Thursday, I received further requests and changes from the bus contractors association through their attorney, meaning which were minor issues, and I gave a handwritten copy out to all members tonight reflecting some redlined changes to the version that you saw online with the board agenda to address those additional issues which the bus contractor, or the contractor association raised last Thursday. You probably addressed 90% of their changes, the management request that affected that. But to highlight the major aspects of the changes to the contract here, one of the major issues with the bus contractors was the fact that under the prior contract, the board had no obligation to provide uninsured and underinsured motorist coverage for the bus contractors and the drivers. That was in part because the county did not have that type of coverage, because as you recall, the Board of Education, under the county's broad insurance plan, under that insurance plan, the county self-insured up to the first $350,000 of coverage. For any claims in excess of that, the county purchases an excess carrier policy. Under the prior excess carrier policy, the county did not have uninsured and underinsured motorist coverage that would have covered the bus contractors. This, just within last month, the county went back and rebid the insurance contract and the insurance claim package for the county, and as part of that new bid package, we, the county specifically requested underinsured and uninsured motorist coverage for bus contractors be added to the bid solicitation when that was sent out. And in fact, at no additional cost, the winning bidder that the county has selected, which is CCMI, has been willing to offer uninsured and underinsured motorist coverage to the bus contractors for no additional expense to the county. So one aspect of the major change of this contract from the prior one really benefits bus contractors in the sense that we're adding insurance coverage for uninsured and underinsured motorist claims that they never had before. So that's a new thing that's really benefits the bus contractors. Secondly, you will see in the contract that the existing mileage and seat rates are the same as they are in the current year. We did that with the idea that we would go ahead and get the contract approved, and assuming that the school board's budget is approved, then we would then be able to subsequently approve that one and a half percent increase to the mileage and seat rates, which has been in the proposed budget Mr. Sandvik put together. So that's why you have two motions before. You have one motion that just approves the contract alone, and you have a second motion that's subject to the county approving the school board budget, we will propose an increase of one and a half percent to both the mileage and seat rates in the contract. Of course, the bus contractors would like that number to be higher, and they feel like their costs that they're incurring to run the buses get increasingly high, higher every year, and they don't really feel like one and a half percent fairly compensates them for the increases they've been sustaining in the operation of their buses, but with the tight budget constraints that the school system had to work with this year, one and a half percent was all really the school system thought they could put together in the way of an increase in mileage and seat rates this year. So that's where the one and a half percent increase comes from. The third component of this is with respect to the fuel rate, we are proposing the fuel rate remain the same, that formula will stay the same as what it is for the current year. The change is that rather than just evaluating it on an ad hoc basis whenever the issue comes up, there's a new requirement that the school board will look at it every year and look at the fuel situation on an annual basis, and if there's any adjustments that are needed to be made to compensate for additional fuel increases, they can be done on annual basis. So no longer it will just be done whenever the issue comes up, it'll be done, we have to address that on an annual basis. So those are the three major aspects in which this contract changes and differs from the prior contract. If anybody has any questions, we'll have to answer those.
Not specifically on those, but 9.3, as far as the limitation on the liability coverage?
Yes.
Has that been discussed as far as specifically, this is what this policy does?
We have discussed that with the bus, 9.3 provides that the liability insurance coverage provided by the board shall be in effect only when the bus is on an assigned route, in transit to or from home, or when carrying Rutherford County students on activities sanctioned and approved in advance by the board. So what that provision says is that if you have a bus contractor who is running special field trips that are outside of a school sanctioned event, or they have some charter operations going on, that they're taking a church group somewhere, in that case, that they are not covered by the school board's insurance policy. So so long as that bus is being operated on school business, they're covered by our insurance, but when that school bus is not being operated for official school business, they don't have insurance coverage through the Board of Education.
I won't get lost in the details, but say a bus owner, a bus driver, they're on their way to a school to pick up, they stop and get fuel.
Yes.
And they're, but they're en route. They're, since that's an en route event, they are covered.
That would be covered, yes.
There's been some questions in the past.
If a bus driver took their bus off, they were on a route and decided to go to Florida for some reason, or just went out of state, there would not be coverage for that, obviously.
Anybody else have any further questions? Mr. Reed?
We have a specific policy here that's attached for use of cell phones. I'm sure it's written in here, but Jeff, you have to know. Is it dependent on whether or not there are students on the bus, or is it any time the bus is in operation?
I think Reed's, it was any time the bus is in operation, the way it reads currently.
Okay. Also, are we still using two-way radios on the buses with so much cellular communication? Is two-way still in motion of communication?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Well, this will be coming up tomorrow night.
Anybody have any questions before we vote? We can readdress it again. B, where B?
2013-2014 bus contract list. Pursuant to policy 1-41, bus contract award procedures, the new contractor list for 2013-14 school year is presented. These four lists, first priority, regular bus drivers, second priority, part-time or sub-drivers, third priority, those who have turned down the opportunity, and the fourth list, those who currently own one or more contracts. They are for approval in order to facilitate the awarding of new bus contracts on a timely basis for the beginning of the new school year and thereafter, as contracts are turned into the transportation department throughout the year. Recommend approval, motion to approve the potential list, first, second, third priority contractors' list, and fourth list of current contractors for 2013-14 school year.
I probably hear more complaints on the fourth list than probably anything else as far as redoing it every year. And I guess I'd kind of like to know the reason why we just don't leave it static and just keep adding to the bottom and moving towards the bottom.
One of the things we found, basically since I've been here, what, seven or eight years now, is that as transportation costs increased, number of sizes, not sizes, but cost of buses, we found that contractors are, if they have more than one bus, they have the ability to cover a lot of expenses that say just one bus entails. In other words, the more buses you have, then your overhead costs are less. And so consequently, the fourth list enables a contractor to get more than one bus. And if you change the list every year, or let's say you draw one year, and your number, in this case, there's 63 on there this year, let's say you're number 50, well, it's gonna be several years before you can get another bus if you're number 50. If you redraw the list again the next year, or make it random, because it's random, we pull it out of the fishbowl, the possibilities of drawing another bus may change the following year. So what could possibly happen is, a contractor could get multiple buses, and when you have multiple buses, then you have the ability then to have spare buses, which enables the system, our system, to utilize a spare bus, and we have a substitute bus that can go and pick up students instead of having to use other contractors to come and cover their route, as well as to cover the route that's broke down, or that they don't have a driver for. If you have more than one bus, then you have the ability to be in the same area that your first bus is at, and if you're in that same area, you're able to cover in the event that bus breaks down, a whole lot easier than if you have to rely upon someone else. So changing the list every year increases the possibility that contractors can get multiple buses, and that's the system that I think we ought to be heading towards, so that we can help cover the county a whole lot more efficiently, as well as the contractors can make, able to sustain a living a whole lot easier.
It could, it could go the other way too, couldn't it?
How's that?
I mean, if you got somebody 10 on the list this year, and we redraw and they ended up 40.
That's true, but then by the second token, the next year, they have opportunity to draw again.
Yeah, I mean, it could go either way.
Sure.
That's the point I'm making.
True.
I guess, I guess the trouble I have is, you know, why, why you wouldn't put the newer contractors on the bottom and just continue to length the list, work itself out eventually, that as you move down, okay, you have an opportunity to have another route. Well, I'm not, I'm not ready to have another route. Okay, we go to the next one, kind of like we're doing now. So, you know, I don't disagree with you, but I'm not sure that I'm, that I agree that that's the best process. I'm not sure that we wouldn't be better off just adding to the list every year and just working down the list, so just a thought.
Well, you know, if you were, if you were number 50, you'd probably give up that possibility of ever getting another bus. You may decide, well, I think I'll just go ahead and turn my contract in. So then you start having a whole lot of turnover from the standpoint that they can't get ahead, they're not going to, if they're below, say, number 20. I didn't bring it with me, but there are, I went back to see, how many times did we get to the fourth list, and how many, how many buses did we take? One year we took nine, another year we didn't take any, we never got to the fourth list. I think last year we got to four or five. So there's not a whole lot as far as that we get to the fourth list, but by utilizing the random drawing, we have, we know that there's gonna be a whole bunch of people that want to take the opportunity to get another bus.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there any, right now we have an incentive for larger buses, and that gives us greater capacity and allows us to carry more students with an individual bus, and so as they increase the size of their bus, their rate of pay goes up, right?
Well, they can only get an 89 or a 90 passenger bus.
Okay.
And you get, if you got 90, you get one more seat than you do with an 89.
Okay. Is there anything going on in bus technology out there that as we head toward more efficiency with the Mr. Partey's new position and such, that there's any reason for us to look into the future and talk about the more efficient bus? Certainly seems to be that it'd be advantageous for the contractor to use the most efficient one that they possibly could, but if natural gas fuel buses or something like that are a possibility out there, is there anything that you're aware of on the horizon that we should consider?
Well, not, I guess not from our standpoint unless we're utilizing them for activity buses. I think that's a, something that a contractor would look at with regards to, how can I reduce my cost?
Right, but if we were to write into the contract an incentive to move them to those higher efficiency buses that, or something like that, just a thought, work session.
Sure.
We can spitball a little bit.
Yeah.
Do you like it, Mr. Tack?
I thought that was pretty good.
All right. If it's okay with the board, I'll see. We'll read that tomorrow night. Mr. Oden just has to read it one time, if that's okay with everybody. Number 13.
Number 13 is charter school application. The charter school review committee will present a recommendation to the school board regarding the application for the Tracy Darnell Montessori Academy, and I think the, Mr. Tackitt was chairperson of that particular committee.
Yeah, let me speak to that a little bit this evening. We did receive, as indicated, the letter of intent and then the application, Tracy Darnell Montessori Academy, the group, so the children will all know, myself, Ms. Barnes, Ms. Bell, Mr. Evans, Mr. Sandvik, Mr. Zego, and Dr. Bob Bullitt, who most in the room would recognize, he was the community person assigned to that committee or did serve on the committee. As a board, we ask that you take the same approach that as the committee we tried to take, and that's the charge that we have an obligation to look at every possibility to serve our students the best we possibly can for every, and charter schools serving have fit into that category, if they can serve our students in a better capacity than we're able to serve them currently, we need to be open to that. We also have a charge as a committee and as a board to be sure that they meet the high standards that our system already has, make it temporary status, because we owe that, I think Dr. Bullitt made that point clear, you know, that the taxpayers, we certainly owe to the students that are there, that we provide them, if there's options, those options need to be at least, rise to at least a level that we are already providing or exceeding. The group met preliminary two different times, on the 3rd and the 20th of May. I know Mr. Zego, I think, made a couple trips down to Nashville to meet with Metro folks, Ms. Barnes made one, Mr. Evans, myself did as well, and I do want to acknowledge the cooperation we got from Metro Nashville. They have a great deal of experience, not only ourselves, but I think the folks involved in this charter school application are treading on new ground, and so it was important that we get to someone that had far more experience in dealing with the application process. And I think that was the thing that impressed me when we did go and meet and sit in on the Nashville session, myself and Mr. Zego, Mr. Evans, at the very beginning, they impressed upon us the absolute need that we must have to be open to anything that can better serve our students. There's three areas that were considered in the application, and then in the, on May 31st, we did meet with Dr. Karen Lawless, who is the chair of their group, and four other of their board members, I think there's nine on their board, five of which came to clarify things for us, to answer questions for us, to get an opportunity to make their statement to us as to how they anticipate. Three areas that had to be met or exceeded academic plan, their operation plan, financial plan, you have those, you've got those by email this morning, you have a hard copy now, so I'll let you have time between now and tomorrow evening to digest those and look at those and see what the findings were. Thanks to Mr. Evans for compiling that list and making that provision for you. We certainly can answer questions and deal with that tomorrow evening, if you had time to take a look at that. You'll see that strengths were considered and identified, and I think I can be clear from the committee, that a strength that these folks certainly had is a passion for doing the best they can for the children to take the proposals, serve, that they were very clear about that. I thought their board certainly had a broad range of experiences that they were able to bring to the thing. It is a, it was asked before, it is a group of Tennessee-based people, I can't say for sure what access would be, but to my knowledge, all nine of the board members did have direct connections within the state of Tennessee. But we did meet with them on the 31st for right at a couple hours for Q and A, had a, I thought, a very important meeting, opportunity for some questions and clarification and so forth. The findings that the committee came up with are there in your hands, and we will allow you the opportunity to look at that, ask any questions you might want to do tomorrow evening, and then we'll, we'll make our recommendations, we'll have the opportunity at that point in time to have a look through it and feel like what you've come to, our recommendation. It ultimately is a decision of this board. At that point in time, the chair of our board will send them our findings. If they would like to appeal to findings that are not in their favor, they have 30 days to do so, and they will have 30 days to go back and respond to that as well, so. so, and they would have thirty days to go back and respond to that as well, so. And if I'm, if I'm correct, I think we do have, we have another letter for next year's, have we received any kind of a letter of intent for next year?
No.
But that, there's plenty of time for that, I think we can anticipate that, that may in fact incur. And this August, remember, the panel certainly will be glad to make any questions for you if you have any.
Mr. Flaherty? Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate, since there's so much scrutiny, you know, these days, when, when a board deals with a charter school application, that we, we go through this in detail, that, that the chairman of the committee just basically points out the, the strengths and the area of concern? Would that be appropriate?
You want to do it tonight or tomorrow night?
Yeah, I mean tomorrow, yes, or tomorrow night, I mean, just to...
It's appropriate to do whatever the board desires, that's, that's one, whatever your desire would be as far as anticipating questions, I'm not sure how necessary it's gonna be to read word for word what's on this chart, I mean, I'm assuming this has become part of public record, so, you know, if they're, if people agree to, if that's what they want to do. If there's specific things that are not clear, I think those would be things that would be best discussed, I, but if, if it's a desire of Mr. Blair, or the chair, or someone for us to go through the process line by line, we certainly can do that.
The high point to be okay with me there, I've just...
I kind of had the same thought, and I was wondering when the appropriate time would be for us to make it as a matter of public record. I didn't know, at first I thought, can we add this to the agenda so that it is available on the website and, and the general public can view it? Is that premature, does that need to follow our vote tomorrow, because this is documentation presented to the board? So, I was, I have the same intent that you have, Wayne, that we want the general public to see what the findings of this committee have been and, and understand that completely. I hesitate to read it verbatim, you know, as we do the agenda, I think that that might be a little exhaustive, and yet it certainly is a critical issue, so.
One way.
Is there any legal counsel of when, when we are required to disclose this or not disclose, or would follow a vote?
I think it's disclosure, it's a matter of public record now, so you can't go ahead and just put it on the, if you want, put it on the agenda or attach it to, you can't.
I, I would, I would recommend that, and, you know, that tomorrow night, that it would be available on the website as part of our agenda, you know, in the tabs, and I, I would be comfortable that that would be sufficient disclosure, and then, like Mr. Tackett said, if there's a, a specific area of interest that we want to question or hear more about, then we can move forward at that place.
I'm good, I'm, what I'd like to say, Mr. Tackett, if you would, give us, on each item here tomorrow evening, give us a brief overview.
Sure.
And any board members that want to address any part of it after Mr. Tackett goes to it, and...
I think the ultimate question that, that I don't know that I've got in my mind is, since, since we're not making the recommendation at this point in time, should we go ahead and disclose this now, go ahead and get it up, or get, and have it prepared to go up after our vote tomorrow evening? And, and that's a legal question, that's, or a procedural question, we just need to do, to me, whatever the right thing is, and I don't know what that is.
I'm, I would prefer that we wait till tomorrow night to post it, to give us a chance to look at it, digest it, and, because if it goes out tonight, there's gonna be people calling wanting to know, and we haven't read it yet.
Okay. Is it, are we moving to a vote tomorrow night? There, there is a vote tomorrow night, right? Okay, and, but there's not a recommendation as part of the agenda item.
I think Mr. Tackett will bring a recommendation from his committee, so...
Okay, so, your voice recommendation.
And I don't, I, I think we're not gonna make any changes to their committee, so, what we've got here is, is what we'll deal with, so, if everybody's good with that, we'll, we'll go over in depth tomorrow night, if that's good with everybody.
And I've had personal conversations, I'll, I'll, you know, count for the record as well, both with Mr. Rodham and Mr. Tackett, both of whom have made the complete and full application to be as a board member, you know, available, and so, you know, this summary is not the only thing, but it certainly is an essential document, you know, that, that the board members are using in order to evaluate this. So, the, the time and, and specific work of the committee is greatly appreciated by the board.
I, I, let me, let me reiterate the opportunity that this group has had as well, to spend a couple hours with the committee to try to make sure that we are very clear with what they're finding, the book is, I mean, it, it was a very thorough application that they submitted us, so gave them time for clarification, gave us time to ask questions and make sure that we're squared on, on the thing, so, I think that two hours, to me, was the most beneficial of the time that we had.
I appreciate you heading this committee up, so, I know it's a lot of work.
This was the state rubric, right, that we scored, we used the rubric, the state design...
Correct. Now, this is, this is not a made up thing that we're, we're going by, it's, it's following through, and as I say, I know Ms. Barnes and Mr. Zago spent some fair amount of time with folks from Metro Nashville Schools going through and seeing applications that, that do meet specs, and those applications that don't meet specs, so we, they gave us a lot of indication of the kind of things we should be looking for on the plus and on the, on the, on the negative side.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, do you want it posted after the vote or before? I didn't get that clear.
Mr. Nefry, I think wants us to wait till tomorrow night, so...
After.
If that's good with the rest of the board, we'll...
Say, if, if, if that, if that meets what, what our obligation is, that's what I would prefer, that meets that obligation.
Okay. Number fourteen, unit on discussion. Ms. Blankenship, how about your visitors, do you want to update us?
Well, as most of you, maybe some of the board members who don't know, I'm a guide for International Folk Fest. I was a Rutherford County square dancer with Mr. Steve Kates, well, he started at Ketchikan, but then he went to Riverdale where he taught, and this is our thirty-first year of having the dancers here in middle Tennessee, and it looks like they've just now started to come back in from shopping, because they wouldn't have to listen to us, they went shopping just down the street. And so I'm the guide for Turkey this year, we have France and Puerto Rico represented, so I, I don't know if they're coming in or not, but they've been, I have to thank Mr. Hodge for changing for tomorrow night, because I would have had to be out of town on Thursday night, dancing with them in Smithville, so, and it's an all-girls school in Istanbul.
Here they come. You want, you want, right away?
Just bring some ladies in, please. We're getting ready to go to Will Jern's for our barn party.
Are they all high school?
They're all high school girls, it's a five hundred student, five hundred students ten?
Six hundred, almost.
Almost six hundred, okay. And this is a strictly high school, so, it's public school.
We are in Istanbul, in the Asian side, on the side of Bosporus, the public school, state school, these are our students, only here because it was donated from, by the daughter of Souten in Ottoman time, so we cannot change the system. In Turkey, the schools are mixed, but in our school, it's a only girl's school, they have a dormitory, some of them are staying in the dormitory, one hundred students, and the others are coming daily basis, so we have four dance groups, one group is going to Europe in July, and this group is here, two groups, active in social activities, and we are glad to be here.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Ms. Blankenship, I appreciate you bringing them.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Holliday, you good?
Congratulations to the lady Smarter Bulldogs for winning the girls' state softball championship, another, another Rutherford County state championship.
I think Ms. Michael, you have several coming tomorrow night.
Yes, they've been invited, told about it.
Mr. Chairman, to that end, I, I think we should acknowledge that these great facilities that we go about, especially that we provide the basics for, and that the booster clubs then put a lot of really good stuff into much many of our facilities, high school, Rutherford County Schools, facilities are used for spring play, for all the reasons the spring play is here, one of the reasons that we have such a boost to the local economy, which I think we need to keep aside of, it takes place, but I'm pleased that the school board is able to welcome us both to two-hour facilities, and it's great that we have facilities that many people can be proud of.
Anybody else?
I, I was just asked over here by some of us, they wanted to know where are they performing? Tomorrow night, they're at the Christian, Central Christian Church, along with Turkey and France and Puerto Rico, and of course Wednesday, Thursday night, we're in Smithville, Friday night, we're at Patterson Park, and Saturday morning, the same time as the farmer's market, we're on the east side of the square.
Got a full week.
Yes, and they've been very busy, they've been very patient with me, they, they found out how hot Tennessee got today.
They haven't seen that yet.
They'll really find out tomorrow, probably. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Nothing else, we're adjourned.